Everyone ready?
Yes.
Good morning, everyone. The Delaware County Commission Meeting for December 27th, 2021 is now in session. Would you stand and join me in the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning, everyone. I'm Gary Moore, President of the Board. To my left is Vice President Barbara Lewis, and to my right is fellow Commissioner Jeff Benton. Tracy Davies, our administrators with us today, as well as our clerks Sarah and Jennifer. Let's begin.
Resolution number 21-1275, in the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held December 20th, 2021.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1275. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three, resolution number 21-1276, in the matter of approving purchase orders, then announce certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 1223, and memo transfers in batch number MT APR 1223.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1276. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1277, in the matter of approving the list of carryover purchase orders for 2022.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1277. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1278, in the matter of approving the Second Amendment to the contract between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services, and Marion Goodwill Industries for the purchase of Comprehensive Case Management Employment Program and Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Youth Program Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Anderson with Job and Family Services. This is an amendment with Marion Goodwill Industries. It's allowing us to extend services to provide our clients who are exiting our program to follow up with the program on financial literacy, adult mentoring, and transition to post-secondary education.
We'd use them for a while, right?
Yes, yes, we have.
Any other questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1278. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 21-1279, in the matter of authorizing the application for payment under the United States Departments of Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Plaid, Economic Development. You have a resolution before you to allow the payment to the county from the Treasury for the round two, in essence, of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, or ERAP II, as we're calling it. As you'll recall, the first round, we had a sub-recipient agreement with United Way for the almost $6 million that the county received. That money worked through their programs to help our low-to-modern-income residents with rental assistance, utility assistance, and they're finishing up that program. The need continues on. They anticipate that this next round of funding, being a little over 4.7 million, should we proceed with it, would be expended by the end of the fall because the need is so great, it would go pretty quick. So I will tell you, we do have, if we wish to move forward with this resolution today, this is just simply to submit the application to get the money to qualify to come to us. There will be a follow-up agreements that will need to be made. We are also looking at changing the parameters of the program to make sure that we are benefiting as many residents within Delaware County as we can. So there will be a meeting, if not later this week, next week, with our office, the county auditor's office, the other entities involved with this to make sure that we're using the money the best we can and that the program is structured correctly. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
No, just strongly support the program. It's been, it has been successful and helped an awful lot of people.
It has, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
I do have a statement.
I was gonna say, just thanks for the clarification, you know, all the details because this is big dollars.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, apologies. I support the request. However, our federal government, we cannot continue printing money, devaluing the dollar, and borrowing money we cannot repay. We must instead incentivize our citizens to return to ranks of employment, those who are able and capable. So I just think we need to keep that in mind as we vote to approve this, so...
We will do so. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Call for vote.
Vote on motion 21-1279. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Resolution number 21-1280, in the matter of approving the lobbying loan fund administration agreement between Delaware County and the Ohio Development Services Agency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. Zach Dally, Economic Development. This is a standard boilerplate agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for our EDROF program. There's, the money was used mainly in, I believe, 2020 for our initial COVID-19 response. There's some money left, so this is just a six-year extension of that administration agreement to keep the account open and the money's there. So happy to answer any additional questions.
Any questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1280. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 21-1281, in the matter of authorizing the use of a procurement card for the emergency medical services.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any questions?
Good morning, Commissioners. Eric Burgess, Emergency Medical Services. This resolution is just for the approval of a procurement card for a new fiscal coordinator. As you know, Linda is moving over to the auditor's office, and our new fiscal coordinator started this morning, and that position does most of the purchasing for our department. So this will just keep things, you know, smooth through that transition.
Any questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1281. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number 21-1282, in the matter of setting the bid date and time to receive bids for a trash dumpster service contract for the Delaware County Regional Sewer District.
So moved.
Second.
Good morning, Commissioners. Eric McPeak with the Regional Sewer District. This is setting a bid for waste hauling for our screenings. We typically, the contract amount normally adds up to about $12,000, $15,000 a year, but we'd like to streamline it a bit by bidding it out, get some better prices. So you can answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments? Call for vote.
Vote on motion 21-1282. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1283, in the matter of awarding the bid to and approving the contract with Equipica Water Technologies LLC for 2022-2023 calcium nitrate chemical supply contract for Delaware County Regional Sewer District, DCRSD, contract number 2202.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
This is a bid for the odor control chemical we use at the pump stations. We received two bids. One of them was not responsive. It didn't comply with our technical specifications. We've used Evoque in the past, so we're recommending going with that.
Questions or comments? Call for vote.
21-1283. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1284, in the matter of approving a professional services agreement with Answer Advisory Management LLC for on-call construction inspection services for 2022-2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
This recently was HR Gray, and we've used them in the past for inspection services. So we'd like to continue down that road. We put a RFP out for services. This is a $250,000 contract for two years, and this is the, we use them to supplement our inspection of the developments, and their fee is directly reimbursed by the developers.
How much have we spent this year?
I believe, year-to-date, in 2021, we spent $250,000 with HR Gray alone.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, I mean, just with our staff and supplementing that with the demand. So I believe that out of the RFP, the way it was written is we'll award the top three, so you'll see two more. But they'll still average around $250,000, $300,000 a year.
Okay. You really use them a lot, or this type of service a lot, then?
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Again, I mean, it's obviously, but it's directly reimbursed through our process with the supervisor agreements, so...
It moves the development process along.
Oh, yeah. We have, it helps with coverage and that kind of thing.
Yep. Good, thanks, Eric.
Other questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1284. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
You have a sheet in front of you with the most updated version for item number 12. Resolution number 21-1285, in the matter of approving a decrease in a supplemental appropriation for the Regional Sewer District.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen First, Fiscal Manager. This resolution and the next one have been requested by the auditor's office. They asked the sewer district to create two new funds and two new orkeys for the Clark Shaw sewer charges, and this will allow the funds to be more easily tracked against the debt and receivables and for the financial statements. And this first resolution is for the 2021 appropriation changes.
What's the contracted professional services for as a supplemental?
I don't know all the details. I was just asked to fill in since Tiffany's on vacation, so...
Would Eric know? Do Eric do know?
Do you happen to know?
Some contractual services? I don't know if it's on the head.
Okay.
They do have an IGA, and it's reimbursed quarterly to the community authority, so I don't know if that's part of it. I just have very limited information, so...
We can move forward. Maybe Eric, if you could look it up and just let me know what, again, when, I understand the transfer and the creating a new work key. Just why are we adding $45,000 of additional professional contracted services?
Any other questions or comments?
$41,000. $41,000. I said $45,000, sorry.
Call for vote?
Vote on motion 21-1285. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1286, in the matter of approving a decrease in a supplemental appropriation for year 2022 for the Regional Sewer District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
And this is just the same thing, just for the 2022 appropriation changes to the budget.
I got the same question there. Supplementally appropriating another $45,000 for professional services. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Call for vote.
Vote on motion 21-1286. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
That brings us to item number 13 on page 185. Resolution number 21-1287, in the matter of approving the GMP Amendment Number One to the Construction Manager at Risk Agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Gilbain Building Company for the Delaware County Dixby Campus DACC redevelopment.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Good morning. John Melvin, Director of Facilities. Happy for you, the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, or GMP Amendment, for the Dixby project. We've worked with Gilbain and M&amp;A Architects to develop this. And actually, Bob Sewell, Vice President with Gilbain, a project executive here to help answer any questions. We worked with Gilbain and M&amp;A to help try to reduce costs. We targeted about $3 million worth of value engineering. We're still seeing escalation in cost. So this contract amendment is for $40,730,000. That'd be the construction costs for the project out there. Includes all the redevelopment and also new build for the sheriff's office. Of that, $36,880,000 is the actual subcontractor construction cost. The difference is there are general conditions, overhead, construction management fees, and contingency fees. There's still a lot of work to do to try to keep this and save, look for some additional savings, some additional savings in lead times. And actually, Gilbain has, we pushed to get this put together, approved before the end of the year because they're seeing a lot of price increases coming January 1st. So the market is still just not optimistic, and we don't see change in directions anytime soon, so...
But we'll work to cut costs.
Yes, we'll continue to work to cut costs. We want to look at alternative roofing system. We saw over a million-dollar increase over the estimate on the roofing system for the flat roof, and there's also some parts of that are extending the, have an extended lead time, which pushes out the construction schedule. So we want to work to both reduce cost and schedule, which reduce the overhead costs for them.
Go ahead and ask your question. Timeline, I bet you.
I did have timeline written down here as a question.
Yeah, they're ready to start construction. Actually, when you prove this, they'll send out letters of intent before, this week, before the first of the year. They hope to start mobilizing the end of January. And while their schedule, I've been talking to Bob this morning, their schedule had mark, the March, April for demolition to start, but he hopes to start beginning of February in demolition in existing building. Again, with the lead times and stuff, they're pushing, the majority of the buildings would be completed in the May-June timeframe of 2023 and August 23 completion of the project. So again, hoping to accelerate that with some, you know, some alternate systems too, so...
When you say demolition, you want to clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, just inside the existing building.
I'm afraid somebody may interpret that.
Obviously, those interior walls that were coming down, a lot of them are dematerial walls. It's the interior of the building to start working inside there, making room for offices.
Headlines.
I can see the headline if we...
No, there's really no, any real exterior, other than the old fire ground sites and things like that, so...
I have a question. Or maybe, Tracy and I have talked about putting a financing package together because this is more money than we had expected to spend, obviously. We have some cash reserves. We've been targeting for use on this, and we're going to sell some buildings and some land and so on. So we need to put together a comprehensive financing package so that we know how much and when we should borrow.
Yep, and actually, we've, Miss Davies and I self, and Karen and the Cy with auditor's office, we've met a week or Friday.
Karen will be key in that. Cy will be key.
Yep, so they're working on that plan. I know there's some, still some definition for what funds we can use out of some of the ARPA funds and, you know, talking with Cy, we're looking at probably having to bond a portion of this. That process would probably start February, and that's, talking with Cy, it's a 90-day process. But we don't even know those numbers until the end of that process to lock it in. So it gives time to get some more answers to what funds we can use, looking at the cash flows and stuff. And since this project won't be completed till mid-2023, we'll actually have the 23 budget year to look at the cash flows in those years, so...
Can we quote you on that mid-year date for completion?
Bob's here. There's the man with the numbers, the dates.
He wants to go over and talk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I lost a question.
The mid-2023 completion.
Question is, yeah, we're going to be wrapped up with all the components before.
Introduce yourself.
Sorry, Bob Sewell with Gilbain. The plan to, for the existing building is to have it done in May. The sheriff's building, due to the steel lead time, is the last building that's going to get done. We'll have the outbuildings done probably around May as well. So the last thing, the last thing that gets wrapped up in that August is the sheriff's building only. All the rest of the stuff should be able to be occupied around May.
Do you have a date for the sheriff's building?
We're shooting for July 15th with a month of punch lists.
So not far behind.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions?
Again, very important strategic initiative for us for handling the growth in Delaware County, business development, et cetera, residential, and putting all these functions together is going to really help, help that effort, help our businesses, help our residents, and also a long overdue sheriff's administrative building. You know, we've needed that for a long time. And thank Sheriff Martin for his patience as we, as we knew this was where we were going, but it just is taking a long time to get there, and he's been very patient. So this is very, very good news, moving forward. Again, way more than we wanted to spend, but that's just the crazy market we're in right now.
But we'll save where we can when you identify savings.
Yes, sir.
Before taxpayers know that.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
We're gonna vote?
Okay, great. Call for vote?
Vote on motion 21-1287. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 21-1288, in the matter of approving the Platinum Subdivision for Common Access Drive for Hoover View.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Bodnar with the Engineers' Office. Before you is a platform for Hoover View, which is a five-lot common access drive located off of Sunbury Road in Genoa Township. We'd ask for your approval of that, and it has been vetted by all parties, all agencies, and everything looks good.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1288. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1289, in the matter of accepting the road and approving recommended speed limits and releasing the security for Sciota Reserve Extension.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Before you, Commissioners, is the acceptance of the, onto the road system of the Sciota Reserve Extension. It is .08 mile extension of roadway of Cherry Glen Drive, and it is involving a 14-lot subdivision which is located off of Home Road in Concord Township.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1289. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1290, in the matter of authorizing the purchase of equipment for the county engineers' office.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Yes, Commissioners, for your review and approval, is a purchase of a 2012 International Single-Axle Dump Truck, and the cost is $45,000. This replaces a piece of equipment that is no longer in service with the engineers' office. It was looked at by our shop mechanics and found to be a viable investment.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious. We're going, we're buying a used dump truck. We usually buy new, but...
We're on a cycle for our newer equipment. The older equipment that is no longer in service, this matches that pretty well, and we received dollars for that, for the replacement of that equipment.
Okay, okay.
So it just keeps it, rather than throw off the whole schedule by one vehicle, we maintain the cycle that we have enjoyed over the past. It keeps parts where they should be, replacement parts, doesn't throw off the system too awful much.
Okay, questions, comments? Call for vote.
Vote on motion 21-1290.
Just a second.
There, per the advice of counsel, this was an insurance situation. We did receive reimbursement for insurance. Hence, the replacement costs were covered. Thank you, Counsel.
Okay, with that, any questions, additional questions or comments? Call for vote.
Vote on motion 21-1290. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 17, resolution number 21-1291, in the matter of appointing a member to the Delaware County District Library Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have before you our last resolution for the year. It's been a busy year with appointments, and this one is for the Delaware County District Library Board of Trustees to appoint Beth Lear to the board.
Questions or comments? Call for vote.
Vote on motion 21-1291. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just, just one comment. Wanted to thank Michael Butler for his service on the library board, and thank you.
We have that in the letter that will go to him.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, that brings us to administrative reports. Tracy?
Nothing to report today, thank you, other than hope everyone had a good holiday and wish you a Happy New Year.
And brings us to Commissioner Reports, and Commissioner Benton, going first, I don't know if you get to call.
Yeah.
I don't have a whole lot to report.
If you report, you'll have to report.
Yeah.
I guess one other thing is the Buckeyes are playing on New Year's Day, so I'm gonna say, "Go Bucks."
That's right, the Rose Bowl.
The Rose Bowl.
That's pretty neat.
Assuming they play. Three bowl games have been canceled already, so...
Oh, gosh.
Who knows? Hopefully, hopefully they'll have the game, and hopefully go win.
That's it?
That's all I got.
No golf, I guess. Not trying to come here for golf.
Well, golf starts in January. The serious golf.
We look forward to those reports.
I will give you weekly updates.
Commissioner?
I just wish everybody a Happy New Year, which is coming really quickly.
And I just, Merry Christmas is behind us, but we really, since we didn't meet last Thursday, I hope everyone had a very Merry Christmas. Important time of the year, and of course, as we approach the new year, I think a lot of people like to forget this year, and hopefully we're gonna have a much more productive and here, not only locally, state, but federal. And I think we all look forward to 2022. I have nothing else, so I can continue.
All right. Item number 20, resolution number 21-1292, in the matter of delegating temporary authority to the county administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1292. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1293, in the matter of delegating authority to the Director of the Department of Job and Family Services.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1293. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1294, in the matter of approving a transfer of funds for the year 2022 appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1294. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1295, in the matter of declaring public purpose and authorizing the use of Delaware County funds for the purchase of coffee, meals, refreshments, and other amenities.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-1295. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-1296, in the matter of reorganization of the Board of Commissioners' President.
So moved.
Second.
Do I need to?
We need to make a motion.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if we needed to actually name, name a name before. Okay. Yes, I would nominate Commissioner Lewis to be President for 2022.
And I will second that. Any questions or comments? Call for vote.
All right, so that was motioned by Commissioner Benton in the matter of reorganization of the Board of Commissioners as President for year 2022. We appoint Commissioner Lewis, and that was seconded by Commissioner Merrill. Vote on motion 21-1296. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
With that, if you want to proceed. With that, if you want to proceed.